And welcome to the Wednesday, May 5th. Workshop of the Cape Elizabeth Town Council. Checking. The attendees, we have. About three people joining us at the moment. So we've got a couple of finance items top the agenda. So glad to see John Corderaro here. And then later on, we'll talk about pesticide regulations and the conservation committee's recommendation regarding water body naming. Before we do that, is there anybody that is joining us from the public that wants to speak? But any of these items in advance of us getting into them? Patricia Wasserman, I see your hand raised, so Matt can open up your mic in just a second and we will. Recognize you go ahead, get your name and your address if you don't mind, please.
Hi, I'm Trish Wasserman at Three Running Tide Road in the Broadcove neighborhood in Cape Elizabeth. And is this the appropriate time to make a comment about your pesticide? Discussion that's coming out, or is that a separate time?
I can, I can go back to you at that point if you want to. Specifically talk about that when it comes up, that'd be fine.
Whatever you prefer.
Yeah, why don't we do that? So that we're not getting too deep into that it that item out of order on the agenda, but. Yeah, we'll be happy to take comment on that at that time. So I should have clarified it. I meant any comment on the first couple of items that these financing related ones, but we'll, we'll be sure to include your. Your thoughts when we get to that item, Ms. Wasserman. So. So seeing no other hands raised at the moment. John, why don't I turn it over to you for an introduction on? The first item policy related to short term financing for bonded capital projects.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packet, there are two memos. And a draft of the policy statement. The first memo is dated April 13. It was written to the town manager in response to the town council meeting the night before in which this item was referred to workshop. And I noted that what I heard was three items of concern addressed by counselors. And I've addressed those as best I could. And then there is the April 29th memo. Which is the memo of transmission. And then there is the draft policy statement. The the document, the policy statement authorizes the town to use its cash reserves that are available to fund short term capital projects that have bond approval. It sets a limit of $500,000. It requires an affirmative statement from either the finance director or the town manager that the use of the funds to to take care of the project would not have a detrimental effect on the town's finances. It limits the amount of time available for that funding to one year. But it allows for the town council to approve two one year additions. The reason for that is that we're dealing with a large construction project. Borrowing short term is a normal course of business. And then you borrow that through a ban. And then the ban is either refunded with a bond under that authority or is rolled into the construction bond. Which is the permanent financing for the project. So that's the basic outline. The other thing is that this sets a variable interest rate to be charged to the project monthly. At 50 basis points over what the town is would be currently getting through its primary banking relationship. Cash management account. The reason for this policy request is by using this funding mechanism. The town would save on the cost of issuance for a bond. Would not need a letter of opinion from bond council, so we say there. And we can move it along very quickly and take care of the project until permanent financing is arranged.
Great, thank you. Do counselors have questions? I see Councilor Wilson, so your hand go up, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just have a, just a couple of nuancey kind of questions. I, I, I believe that with any project, we should have a purpose, not just what is the project. So what's the purpose of the project? So that we all kind of so underneath what we would be looking for, it's like, so what's the purpose? And maybe that would be in the name, but I just think that we need to know why we're doing it. The other thing is, is that. If I could read my writing, we'd be in a good place. I think you already took care of that one. The other thing that I thought about relative to criteria. And, and maybe the, the fact that it says makes reference to it's something that is approved for a bond order. Maybe that is in itself is enough, but what are the types of projects that we would want to do this for? On type being. We want to add solar panels to police station. We want to do blah, blah, blah. Good. I would assume that is an an exception approach, not a norm. So therefore, when I say criteria, it is like what falls within that realm? If this is going to become a norm versus an exception, then I think we need to discuss that. But what are the types of projects that would fall under this?
Let me try and answer your first question regarding purpose. The purpose would start with the bond order. This, this policy is dependent upon a bond order having been approved by the town council. So the purpose would have been identified in the bond order. And that addresses the issue of the purpose. The types of, of projects would be any project for which the town council has approved a bond order. So the town council has the approval authority for a bond order. It states the purpose. And this is just a funding mechanism. If this policy is not approved, it doesn't pose a dramatic problem. It just means that we would issue either the permanent financing against the bond order. Or we would issue short term borrowing through bond anticipation notes. But all of that would have been covered in the original bond order, which is why that is the underlying criteria in this policy.
I think. John, if I could put it maybe in more personal finance terms that might help either other counselors or just members of the public who might tune in and see this. I mean, this is basically just adding a financing option. It doesn't change, as you just stated. Any of the either process or approvals that would lead up to whether or not the council would choose to appropriate an expense for something. So if you think about sort of your own purchasing and, you know. So you need to get a new washer or refrigerator or something, you know, you can pay cash, you can pay credit, you can draw on your home equity loaner line. If you have it, you can get a, you know, fixed rate loan, all those types of things. This is, this is merely adding to the list of options for, for facilitating that financing, correct?
That's it.
Okay. So the normal due diligence would have been gone through in order to determine whether or not something was a valid and necessary and appropriate expense to begin with. And then as the sort of second in the two step dance there, okay, and how do we think it makes the most sense to actually fund or finance that? So does that sort of clarify things, Penny? From that perspective?
I assumed it was just another funding mechanism. I just, I, I just. And I understood those nuances. I just want to make sure that it's viewed in that way as the due diligence has been done. We now know that this is an option we're going to look at in order to fund something. And that's, that's how it's looked at. And so Matt, the town manager would come forward and say, this is the approach I think makes the most sense for the town, and this is why. I just want to make sure all of that is understood. And I also want to add that I don't see anything in here about default. Or non-payment, which there's an assumption here that wherever this might happen, if we were doing this with the school paying it, if there's a a way to say, and not that they aren't going to pay, but those are some of the types of, of things that I also think need to be covered in any financial agreement. So I, I'm not opposed to this. I just want to make sure we all understand the road we're headed down.
Jeremy, I think you wanted to weigh in, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Jamie. And, and thank you. And that actually Penny's question actually raised another question for me as well. So I guess my first question, John, is I just want to make sure I understand. So I, I think this makes sense as a good option for sort of saving the town money on financing of projects that, that fall within these criteria and thresholds. I just want to make sure. So do you anticipate like? If we use this financing mechanism, do, is this something that we, you know, where, where we're charging interest? Does this have to be reported? And is there any potential for this having any material impact on our overall bond rating for other projects? Or is this, you know, purely something that takes place within the town's ledgers? And therefore, you know, isn't going to impact other and, you know, sort of any other financial standing of the town? And does that question make sense?
It does. And the answer is that this is an internal financing. It is not anything that has to do with the, with credit rating agencies. We are, we have the highest credit rate, credit rating that we can have given our size. If we were a larger community, we would be moved up to the very highest credit rating available to a municipality. We're at the second level. But this would have no impact whatever.
So to extend Jamie's metaphor of buying a new washer, you know, the, instead of us putting it on the credit card or taking out a home equity loan, this is us saying, oh, we happen to have enough cash reserves to finance this project. And therefore, it's not, there's no material impact because it's not even getting reported out to, to a credit.
Using that metaphor, we borrowed the money from our savings account and we replaced it on a monthly basis.
Okay, thank you. And then just to follow up on an initial question that Penny's question raised for me. So it's my understanding that, you know, the town is the bonding agent for the schools. Is that, and so if there were a if there were ever a bond that we floated for municipal, through the municipality for school purposes. Whether, whether we do that self financing or for or through a traditional bond market. The, the town would is ultimately the entity that's floated that bond. So we'd ultimately be on the hook for that anyway, or am I misunderstanding that?
No, you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Valerie, go ahead.
Thanks, John, for doing all of this work. I'm just curious, is this a typical policy that towns use? Do, do other towns use this?
Absolutely. I spoke with the finance director in the city of Bangor. And they use it all the time. They don't go through the policy and bring it to the city council for approval. It's done administratively and it's reported. Typically, this would be reported as a due to, due from, between funds. It would be treated as an inter-fund loan. And it still would be reported as such. The difference here is that we would have the ability to charge the project and the town council would have that approved it. And the primary underlying cause of action would be the approved bond order. Without that, there is no policy to be implemented.
Okay, and then my question, you're talking about we would charge interest on this. I'm, I'm kind of curious why we would charge interest when the money that the school would be using to pay this back would be from taxpayers. Correct? Wouldn't it be from property taxes and taxpayers? It, it just seems that why would we charge interest when that would just add to the taxpayers' burden?
Okay, so.
Wouldn't it just be an inter-fund loan?
I wouldn't treat it. That's why I'm bringing it forward under this policy request. There, when you use your money. You don't have it available for earning interest, you impact the current taxpayers. By being able to charge it to the project. And then roll that into the long term permanent financing. That cost, along with the cost of the project, are passed on over the long term of the borrowing. If this was not handled through this mechanism. The taxpayers would be paying interest on a ban. They would be paying for a legal opinion. They would be paying for the cost of issuance, and there'd be a lot more costs that they would bear. Those would also be passed on into the long term financing. This is a means by which you reduce that total cost of issuance. That would otherwise be passed on for the long term financing.
Yeah, I, I understand that. And thank you for explaining that. It just seems to me that if we were doing it for one year, we wouldn't really even need to charge interest. But, but if we need to, that I understand, but it just seems that that was a bigger charge to our taxpayers.
Penny, you had further question?
Yeah, just a quick one. Um, is there a certain number of these we would want to have at any, um, like a limit? I'm sure it has to do with. You know, that 12 point, whatever percent that we'll talk about later. But is there a, a number that we would want to make sure we didn't have more than three of these at any one time or two or whatever? And I don't even know if that's even a necessary thing to think about, but just a question.
All right, so there's a bond order that the council approved last year in which we refunded debt that was issued in 2008. Before that, the bond order was in 2016. The town does not go out to bond very often at best. Whether you say it could only be done once or could be done twice, we just do not have a history of having bond orders prepared. With Matt, we've shifted from using bonds to using lease purchasing and limiting our lease purchasing period to five years instead of long term financing for capital purchases. So I, I do not see that even in this interest rate market that the town is going to be issuing a lot of long term debt.
Gretchen?
Thanks. Um, so Jeremy and Penny asked most of my questions, so thanks for doing the heavy lifting, you guys. I did just notice is a really small thing, but the date at the top, he took us back nine years, I think. So I just want to make sure we catch that. And then I just had a question, John. I'm not quite sure how to articulate this, but section E that the council can re-approve. If for some reason the council didn't vote to re-approve, what would happen? We'd either have to pay it back right away, or we'd have to take it out for a bond immediately, or those are options. I'm just.
Those are the options is to issue, go out to the market and issue a short term bond anticipation note. Go out to the market and issue a permanent bond. Or to appropriate the money and pay it off using a current appropriation.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And this looks great. Thanks for your work on this.
And I apologize for the transposition.
Nicole?
Everyone got what I had except the, the date thing. Thanks, Gretchen. So I, I'm getting into the nuance of the language here a little bit, but for me, I like to have checks and balances, especially when it comes to money. And so where it says the town manager or finance director can request the financing for town projects. And then the next one says the finance director or town manager shall make the affirmative statement. I just wanted to be clear that if one is requesting the money, the other one is making the affirmative statement that we can't have one person doing both of those things. To request and to affirm that it won't hurt the town. And then the other thing is that the maximum out self-financed per event is $500,000. And I think this is a little bit along the lines of what Penny was talking about with. How many do we do a year? Is there a limit? And I think that's where you get to the affirmative statement that there aren't problems. Like it won't impact anything. So if you can just clarify that. I think you already did that we, we don't get these often enough for us to have too much debt from this.
No, we don't have too much. I can take a look and for the council meeting. If, if council wishes, I can adjust the language to ensure that one person requests and a different person affirms.
I think that does make sense and probably be what. You know.
I'll work out the language for next week.
Okay. Are there other thoughts, discussion, comments on this item? Jeremy?
Channeling Chris Straw here. One last super, super nitpicky thing. A, all of the, all of the points here end in a period except for D, which ends in a semicolon. So probably just clearing, cleaning that up would.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
John, thanks for giving the Bangor example. That was going to be my main question was making sure we weren't sort of out on a limb on this. And I figured that there were probably other municipalities, whether in Maine or elsewhere that were doing this kind of thing. And so appreciate you giving the example to illustrate that. So thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments or questions at this point? So we'll make these couple of small little tweaks and we'll look to bring this forward for Monday's meeting to approve and authorize. And then Matt, do you or John have any sense just anticipating whether or not this will be the likely route that that, that we would want to go on, on the request for the $300,000. It's in the budget from the school. Should that get approved?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree. I think it, it works. I think they're they're hopeful that that also is the method that's chosen to go forward with as well on the school side.
Yep. Okay. Well, if there are no other comments or questions, thank you, John, for this one, but I think we get to keep you around for a little bit. So next is the updates to the purchasing procedure and fund balance procedure. Before you get going, I'm just gonna note, we've still got the same three folks, and I'm assuming none of them have an interest in speaking on this item. Being somewhat related from a finance perspective, but seeing no hands raised in the Zoom meeting, we'll, we'll proceed forward. So go ahead, John.
All right. I would like to start with the fund balance policy. The fund balance policy was last adopted in 2011. So it's 10 years old. And the draft policy, you have it both in a clean copy and in, in red line. So you can see where the changes are. Fundamentally, the change is to go from having one month's worth of revenue set aside to increase that to one and a half months. One of the things that we saw in the last year during this pandemic was that we were not as impacted as other communities around the nation. But municipalities as well as state governments were seeing a loss of revenues. They were laying off staff. They were cutting back on their ability to provide public services. And while we were not as severely impacted as others were, there's no assurance that should we face another fiscal period of stress that we would not be impacted. So the ability to raise our target fund balance will help us in the future. In terms of what that means in dollars. Using FY 2020, we had total revenues of 41,641,000. Using the 1/12 or 8.33%, that meant a target of 3 million, just under 3,500,000. Actual amount was 4,600,000. Using this revised number at one and a half months or 12 and a half percent. The, the target would be reset to 5,205. The increase over the current standard is 1,700. But having that money set aside will provide future councils and future residents with a better assurance to that they could weather a fiscal storm should another one hit.
Okay, thanks, John, for the introduction. Matt, can you? I think would have proceeded John, joining in his role, but can you, we while we haven't revised the fund balance policy, we did, if I'm not mistaken. Didn't we, didn't we touch on this with once, once we're a certain amount over what's outlined in the policy? Can, can you remind myself and the rest of the council of what action we took, if you recall?
Yeah, that, that predates me, but for, for funding anticipated capital expenditures, if you wanted to earmark it for that, as well as for lowering the tax rate as a, as a function of that, but that, that dates back.
Maybe I missed, maybe I'm misremembering. I thought there was something, again, to invoke Chris's name, that Counselor Straw had brought up that you know, if, if the fund balance, if the unassigned fund balance was in excess of a certain amount. That, that, that we be required to draw it down to this threshold, you know what I mean? Like that there be a a ceiling on, on how much could accumulate in the fund balance was the point.
Yeah, we I'm sorry, John.
I was gonna say during last year's review of the audit results. While Chris was still on the board, Chris reminded the council and the auditors that the policy, which I have not recommended a change in. Says when the, when the balance exceeds the target between 100 and 115%. That excess amount is supposed to be used to reduce the tax commitment. If the balance exceeds 115%, it can be committed or assigned to any capital need or unanticipated expense. it can be committed or assigned to any capital need or unanticipated expenditure. And again, I have not suggested a change in that that standard.
Okay, that's that's what I was thinking of, and I appreciate you refreshing my memory on it, so.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, that I remember the conversation we did. We did have about that, but uh, yeah, we hadn't made hadn't made the change. But uh, I do, uh, yeah, we did have that conversation and uh, just as far as looking, we did have an excess amount uh, trying to anticipate our future needs for that. So uh, sorry for that part. I knew we had to change it.
No, that's fine. And the only reason I'm bringing it up is because I remember the conversation being around this generally. While it seems like a good problem to have, avoiding too much building up in the unassigned fund balance was the whole objective of that, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Thanks for the reset on that. Um, so are there folks that have questions or would like to make comment on this? Uh, Nicole, you're first up.
I was just wondering what the plan is to close the gap. I don't know if we're currently sitting at like 110 or something, but if we're going from um, 8.3 to 12.5, do we have that cash on hand to immediately make that change? What's the plan there?
We don't have the cash immediately on hand. It is a target balance. It's not a required balance. So what happens is as we finish the fiscal year, we see where we are in unexpended appropriations that add revenues in excess of uh, of uh, and expected amounts. We see where we are. And then uh, as we move into the budgeting period for the next fiscal year, we make a judgment on whether or not we commit more to tax relief or we leave it and build it up further. So it 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 is not a statement of requirement. It is a target to to look to achieve, but it doesn't say you must be there.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to be raising taxes and it was, you know, let's hit some target goals.
If if I could follow up on that as well, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
It, yeah, Counselor Boucher, that is, uh, that would be a goal now uh, for us to get to that point uh, from where we are and uh, but not. Uh, yeah, it wouldn't be uh, adding additional burden to the tax rate to to close that gap. It would be cumulative over time. And then try and trying to accomplish that as a goal. And then in the future as well, if uh, if we are at that goal or just above it, and the council may need to drop below that goal, uh, you you also have that ability instead of instead of ha- having that as a hard floor or a hard ceiling. So you still have the flexibility as the council to uh, to designate funds and use funds as you deem appropriate. But this is a target versus the versus the hard line.
Okay, Gretchen, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'm just having a little trouble understanding what the, um, it's like the second to last paragraph on here. What this means, the town council may supplementally appropriate the excess fund balance if the excess amount is determined after the start of the fiscal year. I'm having a little trouble wrapping my head around what that means.
It, what that sentence is intended to do is first of all, note that you have the ability to appropriate money out of undesignedated or unassigned fund balance. It's a, it's a power that exists. And it is merely a statement of what you have the ability to do. Secondly, is um, during the budget process, right now, we're working on uh, the budget for fiscal '22. And that will come before the council for adoption next Monday. The fiscal '21 uh, budget will close out on June 30th. We'll have our 60-day uh, final expenditures and revenue recognition, and then the audit. So you want to know what the actual uh, undesignedated fund balance at June 30th is for several months. But once we have that figure, which would be sometime in the fall, if there are excess funds uh, within this policy, it just recognizes that the council does have the authority to use those funds and not leave them for the next fiscal year or to just leave them sitting there for some future date. It just recognizes that you have authority to do your job.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There are other points of discussion at this point. Nicole, go ahead.
I'm making it picky. I noticed that you changed all the percentages to 12.50, 100.00. The last paragraph for Portland Headlight has 25% with the without the point zero zero in there.
Good catch. Thank you.
Any other i's to dot and t's to cross? Okay, so this will also be brought forward for Monday's agenda. Next up, moving right along is discussion on upcoming uh, capital items.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, we also have purchasing procedure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yeah.
This is anyways, not a a a much needed update that John has worked on quite a bit to uh, try to uh, expand the current, the current procedure as well as update the amounts to see if the council is it is uh, finding those appropriate as well. So hopefully I've teed that up for you, John, so if you want to take over at this point.
Thanks.
You done good. Thank you, sir. Uh, the last time the purchasing policy was adopted was in 2011, so it's 10 years old. And invoking Chris Straw's name um, began last year at the audit review. Chris noted that the purchasing policy had not been changed and that uh, he was of the opinion that the numbers were too low. One of the things I did was looked at the school department's uh, purchasing policy. And they said a threshold of $20,000. I looked at that and thought that would be too much of a jump from where we are to get up to that point. So I took, or suggesting what becomes a middle ground. Uh, where we are right now with 500, uh, move it up to 1,500, where we're at now. At 3,500 is move that up to $10,000 and then use 10,000 as the maximum amount. Before we're in full-blown RFP mode. That that's the primary uh, change in here. There is some uh, some other changes that uh, such as the use of the town credit card. Um, it can be reviewed, revoked if it's abused. The policy said that it was subject to disciplinary proceedings, but nothing said. It could, the ability to have and use a credit card can be revoked. And uh, it also um, notes what is in effect a casual administrative policy, which is that the town, when it reimburses employees who purchase and then seek reimbursement, has not been reimbursing sales tax because the town has any number of ways to make purchases that employees do not have to use their own funds to then come back and uh, and seek reimbursement. In uh, the section two uh, on purchases between 500 and under uh, 1,500, I added some language about description of items to be purchased, the unit measurement and uh, and some some minor tweaks in the language. And just some renumbering and relettering of the uh, of the bullet points. So uh, finally, I added a section at the very end about who has the authority to obligate contracts. Uh, right now, there is no stated authority. When I was with the bank, although I was a senior vice president, the bank board of directors had to annually approve me uh, to grant me the authority to bind the bank to contracts. There is no statement of authority here that says who can bind the town to contract. So virtually anyone could sign a contract and the town would be obligated to it. So I've added language in there. It says the town manager shall be the sole employee authorized to obligate the town. Except in the case um, where we're dealing with grants and a grant or agency requires a department head. What I'm thinking of there is Maine Bureau of Traffic Safety requires the police chief to sign the grant. And so this extension to a department head or a grant subject to town manager's review takes care of any uh, issues that come up with a grant or agency.
And the last point that number three just memorializes what our current practice is too, because those grants are all presented to us for approval.
Yes, they are.
Anyway, so um, I have two questions on this one. The first one is um, actually relates to this and and the the prior one, uh, John. And in in both cases, it's been a decade or thereabouts that these were last um, updated and adopted. And I'm wondering if um, we need a policy about the update and approval of our policy, you know, how frequently they're looked at and reviewed and so that they don't just sit on a shelf and when we don't have uh, the likes of a Chris Straw or somebody like that, you know, Chris is going to get royalties from tonight's meeting, I think, for the number of times his name is mentioned. But um, wh- what what is a recommended interval for some of these things so that we can ba- basically build that into a regularly scheduled cadence?
All right. So first, let me scare you. In addition to looking at these policies, I'm also working on the investment policy. The investment policy has sat fallow since 1987.
Wow.
It is two years younger than my youngest child. Uh, when I started looking at it, I looked at the statutory reference and couldn't find the reference and realized it was referring to Title 30, which was repealed and replaced with Title 30A. So I think these are policies that are on the books and have not been reviewed. I think Matthew has noted that during the budget review each year, he's going to systematically have us look at the policies. Now, certainly that can be committed to a council policy statement. It could be set for an annual review or uh, at least once every five years. But administratively, if the town manager uh, requires that it be reviewed more more often as part of the budget process, it would serve the town well.
Yeah, what I'm trying to strike a balance. I think I think you hit it right. You know, we, I think we obviously want to strike a balance between not creating an administrative headache and bottleneck, but also making sure that things don't go uh, for decades that are being looked at either, so.
I I'd be happy to work on a policy statement uh, that requires uh, several things. First of all is that uh, the policies be documented in a uh, in a bound book that is provided to all department heads and to council members. So that as the overseers of the town, you have an idea of what policies are in place.
Right.
Secondly, is put in there a uh, a requirement that policies be reviewed um, at least once every five years. And that uh, they uh, that the council then in office be required to re-adopt uh, that policy so that it doesn't say, well, we looked at it, but we didn't take any action. So there's no permanent record to say it was ever reviewed.
Right. Okay, um, I agree with that direction. And I think if we work to sort of firm that up, that would be a good you know, a good thing for us to do. The second question I have pertains more to Matt and specific to the purchasing policy here. And Matt, I'm wondering if you can just illustrate maybe any common examples that you're aware of, of the previous limits obviously being too low. I'm not disputing that, but I'm I'm what I'm trying to think of is sort of regular and common examples that the existing policy has been a barrier for. And whether or not these new um, thresholds would solve for most of those. So maybe you can speak to that since you're the one that would have to approve anything in excess of those, so.
Yeah, I thank you, Mr. Chairman. A good example of that could be possibly, uh, say, uh, a heat pump that needed to be replaced. That might have, uh, you know, those are regularly around $5,000 right now. So if you did that and it was the middle of winter and a heat pump uh, happened to happen to fail, uh, you'd have to go to RFP uh, versus and then wait to go through that that period of time to replace that. Uh, so that's that's one area that I think, you know, just a quick, a quick fix that you would have to do to have that repaired or replaced. Uh, so that would, that would be one item that that comes immediately to mind. And we have yeah, currently we're replacing them at the uh, at the Community Services Building. We had a pretty significant failure of just out of old age on that, but we're replacing those at this point in time. But we did go out to RFP uh, for that. It was it was greater than 10,000 because it went larger. But uh, that would be an example of something that could go, or even a furnace for that matter in the middle of winter. If if we had to replace that, we'd have to go to RFP uh, for a hard, hard item replacement like that.
Okay, lots of other hands raised. Let's go Gretchen, then Penny, then Jeremy. Go ahead.
Thank you. And I'll try to go quickly here and not put labor. Yeah, I, so just as a general statement, I do like these numbers. They do seem a lot more reasonable to me than what appears to have been in here before. So I'm I'm in agreement with those. Um, John, I'm just wondering, I'm just going to go through. So I'm in section two and I'm looking like at C where it talks about giving a copy to the vendor. I just want to make sure we're keeping in mind now that a lot of more shopping is probably done online than when this was originally written. Um, I'm just thinking about, for instance, on the wet team, when we buy a new dry suit, they're like $1,000 and we just order them online. So I don't know if we give a copy of a purchase order to the vendor because the vendor is online and not an actual. So I just, I just want to make sure the wording works for those kinds of purchases. And do you think that still applies?
Yeah, frankly, I don't think it really applies. Uh, I didn't want it to to change it, but let me, let me rework some verbiage in there. If I, if I may, let me just go back to a question that uh, Jamie asked about some examples. Uh, Jamie, um, the general provision right now is for purchases under $500 have to be done using a field purchase order. There's only one department that uses field purchase orders, and that is Public Works. And they send over a copy of their purchase order with their invoice for things as small as two bolts. So it makes a lot of work for Al Ward. He's the only one who does it. Makes a lot of extra work for him because he has to prepare it. Jay has to sign it. He has to pull it. He has to send it over. And it's just another piece of paper that is of no consequence. No other department uses uh, that system, and it's not been enforced. So on the low end, it's an unenforced requirement as compared to the high end where we can have difficulties purchasing something that's necessary. I I beg your pardon, Gretchen. I'll go back and let you finish your other question.
Nope, not at all. No, thank you for, um, and I was just thinking the same kind of thing in 3A where it talks. Nope, not at all. No, thank you for, um, and I was just thinking the same kind of thing in three A where it talks about needing three bids or proposals. Could that also be like if someone did some comparison shopping and presented three other prices? I'm just thinking you don't often get bids if you're going to buy something online. Or maybe we're not encouraging purchases that large to be made online. I don't know. But I just, it kind of just popped out to me as maybe needing, given our ways of shopping.
I, I think perhaps changing it from bids or proposals to quotes.
Quotes, yeah.
Adding quotes to that way work as well. Cause I know we, we have done that in the past on something that does need to be, let's say, purchased in, in a quick manner. Generally, like, yeah, with Chief Gleason, for instance, if he has something else, like, you know, if you can find three comparable prices and, and choose what you, you know, especially in specialized equipment, oftentimes there's only one purveyor of that. So.
Oh, yeah.
That's just, that's generally how we've operationally done that. So I think we add the word quotes to that as well. It gives them the flexibility to, to, to get that done quickly as needed.
That sounds great. And then I actually think I only had one more. I'm, I'm wondering in four H, what is the difference? You changed it from the lowest best bid to the lowest responsible bid. And I'm just wondering what the difference is there. There might be some distinction I'm not aware of.
All right. I, I changed it because a responsible bid is one that meets all of the requirements. The best bid may be determined to be the lowest bid. I can give you an example from many years ago. Agency I was at went out and bid copiers and they got sealed bids. And one bidder sent in and said, our bid is 10% lower than the lowest bid you get. And we declined it and we got told we were going to be sued and they go, the governor's office. And the answer was you didn't bid anything. It's just price. And price doesn't tell us anything about product. And you didn't give us a price. You just said you'll undercut whoever walked in the door. So that's the difference in my mind between a responsible bid and lowest best.
Got it. Makes perfect sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Penny.
I think Jeremy put his hand up before I did.
But I'll go in the order they came up on my screen. So go ahead.
Okay. Um, okay. I had just two simple questions. Um, one of them is who and how many employees are authorized to use credit cards? And should that somehow be represented in here or is it represented someplace else? And I'm, I think you're going to understand, I have common themes here. When I look at a, a field purchase orders, look at anything that's purchased. A description is about the thing. I always look for purpose, like why do I need it? And so wherever we're looking for information about purchasing something or bids on something, it's, there's description and there's purpose. So I always seek purpose. So, and, but the credit card one was kind of my number one.
Want to take that, Matthew?
I, I agree on purpose. I also think, if I recall correctly, I think there are seven credit cards that are out currently. So it's primarily in, in ACP, for instance, there's one credit card for all three departments. And then you have police, fire, public works, finance, and, and then administration. And so it'd be John, myself, Deborah. But yeah, it's not, they're not widely distributed. So it's a, it's, but, but the language is important to have in there. So to make sure, because there have been, there have been examples not in this town. I want to make sure that's abundantly clear. But in other communities where an employee may have used it inappropriately or inadvertently or what have you, we want to make sure we've got the ability to say, okay, that we're, we're taking that back or you don't have the ability to use that anymore.
Anything else, Penny? Jeremy, go ahead.
Great. Thanks, Jamie. And thank you, John. This is a great revision update of this policy. I have two questions. One pertains to section one, subsection G. I, I think I would appreciate it if we, where it states that the privilege of the use of the credit card can be revoked. I think it'd probably be worth noting that it can be revoked by the town manager, just to identify who has that authority. Yeah. And then my other one is a question on section eight where it refers to purchases over 0.05% of the last state valuation. First a question and then, yeah, first a question and then maybe a follow-up question. Can you remind us what that value might be?
It's, it's close again on $2 billion. So this threshold is not going to be met by any, anything that's approved in the budget.
So I guess a follow-up question to that, I, I did have a question of whether the state valuation was the right number to peg that percentage to. But then a follow-up question is, you know, so I, I thought it was in that range and I, you know, so we're looking at purchases that are in the like 500 to $600,000 range. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
I guess my question is, if we're going to set a threshold for purchases on services that need to be approved by the town council, and this is more a policy question for the, for the counselors, although I'd appreciate input from either you, John or Matt. What would the right threshold be? That seems rather high to me.
So I'm answering your question. It is, it's a very high threshold. It is the threshold that was in the policy 10 years ago. I didn't touch it. I think that the, the council should have more input into purchasing. And I, I may be suggesting that a $50,000 minimum be required for a purchase to come before and be approved by the council. So that you're aware of what is going on. And then you can have the opportunity to see that, A, the policy was enforced, that the RFP was issued, bids were properly received and documented, and that it is the lowest responsible bid that is being rewarded.
So, so I, I did, I, I, there was a little crackle in the line. Did you say $10,000, the, the threshold for the RFP is your suggestion?
I said 50.
Okay, okay. Sorry. Good. I'm glad I clarified. Yeah, I think, you know, I, so we have a, we have a threshold for, for expenses that need to go out for a public vote. And it strikes me that the difference between the 0.5% and the million dollar threshold for sending something out for a public vote is not that, I mean, it's a significant difference, but you know, there, there, there should be, I, I think a greater difference between, you know, sort of the council, the, the level of expenses that merit a, a council oversight and then the things that are so big that we need to send them out to the voters. So I'll, I'll put, I don't know what that right number is. I, I think 50 sounds like a reasonable number. I'd actually like to maybe see a little bit more data on this from, from the manager in terms of, you know, I, I'd hate to see us filling up our agenda every month with a lot of items that are just going to go into a consent agenda. But I, I do agree that, that having a threshold that's, that's less than $500,000 for council approval probably seems prudent.
If, if I, if I may provide some assistance on that. One thought is that the council approves those purchases during the annual budget process through the CIP. So that, for that matter, you know, we consistently haven't brought, say, we, if we, you know, you would approve the purchase of, say, you know, a couple of years ago, a, a lawn tractor at $35,000 was approved in there. You don't actually approve the actual purchase, you know, we'll go out to bid on that and have it purchased that way. But you do, you are granting authorization to purchase it at, at that point in time versus having to bring it back for anything that's above a certain level. So all those amounts are being brought forward versus during the course of the year. Say there may be something of, of a lesser amount that you have to purchase as part of the operations of the, of the department that would be under that threshold that, that you may need to purchase. And if it was, say, actually usually those are all built into the budget as well. So if you had unanticipated expenses and perhaps something in the, I'm trying to think, in the maintenance account, that it was a larger, a larger item, say a transmission for our truck or something along those lines. It might have a higher, a higher, a higher price point. But anything above a certain amount is always going to be in, in the budget as, as, as it is, just not the individual purchase. That would, you'd be authorizing the manager to, to purchase on behalf of the town.
So just to follow up on that quickly, Matt. So I guess if we were to set that at a lower limit, and I appreciate that the, you know, the overall expenditure is in the budget, but in terms of the oversight on sort of approval, you know, sort of public transparency and making sure that the, you know, the best responsible bid is being selected, particularly for larger ticket items where it's a sort of an individual expense that's over, just to use the $50,000 number that John suggested. How many, if, if we were to go with a number, if we were to recommend going with a number like that, how many individual purchases a year are we making that would be over that $50,000 threshold ballpark?
Less than five. Would be, would be, and that would probably be in an active year, quite frankly. We don't really, yeah, I mean, yeah, you, you, you basically see them every year. If you, if, if we're doing a purchase of that number, it's in CIP and, and, and we're identifying that as it is. This year would be the loader, for instance, would be one. It would be the big thing. Last year would have been the tower that we've, that we've talked about as well, communications tower or plow truck or pickup truck for that matter this year. Even, you know, we're, we're getting close to that now with, with cruisers for the police department with where they're at as well. Those are coming up in price. One thought I had on looking at that is I have a feeling that, that, that one, one hundredth of one percent that was initially established. When I started with the town, and I'm not trying to go back to the mists of time and tell stories, but we were roughly, I think, 700 million in value. And now we're roughly 1,750 million in value. So that number meant a lot more back in the day, 20 years plus ago and to evaluations in the market. So it may be worthwhile to look at that and say, as you're closing in on a billion, say, that would be one, 10, sorry, point zero one or one one hundredth of the state valuation may be a more appropriate number to use now. So that would be like 175,000 or something like that. And that would probably put you in the larger ticket item range, just, just as a thought. And it would probably have a similar impact from back, back in the day.
Which, which also brings me to my other follow-up question of whether or not it's the state valuation that should be the, the trigger. Am I only concerned there is, you know, we're currently at 85% of, of the state valuation. So, you know, if the state valuation is the right number, you know, why not the municipal valuation? And then you're talking about, you know, a significant difference in what the value is. It seems to me that it's probably a more, more transparent and more clear to just specify an amount that would, you know, make this a little bit more easy to say, see where we're following it.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree. Maybe we can come, maybe we should have a thought on this and come back with maybe a better recommendation that might, that might work mathematically.
I'd appreciate that.
Valerie and then Nicole.
I just have a, a small question here for you, John. On page two, at the very bottom, it's under number one N, which you've added to regarding reimbursements to employees will not include sales tax. Is that for any type of purchase? I understand large purchases and that we can, we have ways to purchase things without sales tax. But does that include small things too? Cause I, I know working with the school, there's times when volunteers or other people go out and buy coffee, pizza, whatever. Is that, is that everything across the board? So they, you wouldn't reimburse sales tax?
That is how it's been done since long before I got here. That's how they do it in the school department. And that's how accounts payable treats town employees. When there is a request for sales tax reimbursement, Allah has brought it down to me. And the only time that I've approved it is if it is for clothing allowance. So that the Public Works employees are given a certain amount for their clothing allowance each year. And if instead of using the town's purchasing power, they buy it on their own, I do reimburse them their sales tax. I had been rather lenient about okaying reimbursement of sales tax as compared to the school department. But by putting this in here, it just codifies what we currently do. Certainly, it can be rewritten to make it discretionary so that it can be overruled and it can be allowed.
Okay. Or, or even a, a limit like, you know, under a hundred dollars or something like that, maybe reimbursed, because it just seems that if teachers or people are purchasing, they don't have a credit card, but they're purchasing some things and then to not reimburse them just a little bit of sale tax that, that just after they spent their time and all buying things, it just doesn't seem quite fair to me.
So if, if I work language in there not to exceed $10 in sales tax paid?
Yeah. So what would be easiest for you? Because it seems like this is creating.
Oh, it's all easy. It's all easy.
Okay. That sounds good. I, I don't know what other people think about it, but it just seems, I'm glad that there is some discretion in there.
All right, I'll work that in.
Does Valerie, do you, the examples you're giving, do you have a sense of frequency on that?
Well, I, I know, I just know with the school volunteering and doing stuff, going to debates or you're at other schools and one of the teachers purchases food, everybody goes out and purchases a meal for everyone and then takes it back and gets reimbursed through the account or there's different things like that. I'm sure it's not, doesn't happen a lot, but I don't know, I just kind of hate to see people, especially when you talked about ordering uniforms and things, they probably don't, everyone doesn't have their own credit card to use through the town. So they'd be reimbursed. It sounds like John's got a handle on it.
Yeah, I, I meant, I don't object and I understand the point. I, I guess I didn't have a very good frame of reference to how often the examples that you were giving were actually occurring. That was all. So.
Well, I think with the school, it would, it happens quite a bit, but I don't know with the municipal employees.
It's, yeah, it's more common on the school side. These conversations with the AP folks, I, I found that to be more common. They have a lot more people, quite frankly. So I think that's where the exposure grows there. On the town side, casual purchases are, are, are not as, not as prevalent.
Yeah. Nicole, go ahead.
I'm putting on my auditor's hat for my standard operating procedure days and especially around the credit. And especially around the credit cards and where you say, okay, we only have seven of them and they're, I'm assuming they're like kept in a safe in that department or anything. But is there a place that spells out how these credit cards are kept under lock and key? And is it actually safer for everyone who uses them to have one in their name? So you can trace back who made what transaction, because you know, you've got like a credit card for an office and three different people using it. It just opens up more risk than I think having more credit cards opens up. So there's that piece of things. And then the other thing from my auditor hat is that they email the town manager for approval when it's, you know, between 1,500 and 10,000. And is there a form email? Is there, you know, you can build things with, I don't know, Microsoft and SharePoint and all these things where people all submit the same form, so there's standardization to it. So that way we know decisions are being made in a methodical way. And I think Penny brought up the, what's the business case for asking for this purchase, how it's being on there? You know, is there a standard process? Are they literally just emailing Matt saying, hey, I need to buy this thing, yes or no? And how are those stored? Like, these are all process questions that I don't think necessarily needs to be in the policy, but I'm just wondering what needs to go here just to make sure that there is a process and it's documented.
I can respond on both of those, Mr. Chairman. The cards are in that specific department head's name. And on the ACP instance, for instance, it's in Maureen's name. But generally, you know, as I used to use it as the assessor, I would talk to Maureen and we would just make sure we all knew that that was being used for that specific purpose at that time. And then it comes in on that department on a monthly basis. And then you make sure that you've got it on the line item, where the expense is with the receipts, that all have to be attached to the invoice. So it's tracked pretty heavily on that side. So mine is in my name. I know the one in the ACP office is locked up on a nightly basis. And then mine, mine travels with me majority of the time as well. And I think others, they may have them locked up in their own departments as well. So they're highly secure on that side of it. And then as far as a request to purchase, depending upon what it is, I end up usually asking the person if they do, you know, they want to get it in writing, explain to me why, you know, what they're looking to purchase, why they're looking to purchase it. You know, in the case that I need to have three different estimates, if they're available, I want to have those three identified as well and why they've chosen to have that. And so it's dated and I do save that as well. And then we have that as part of the file that would go with that purchase.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, on the public works side, Bob always used, now Jay uses, the purchase orders that they have as well. And on facilities, the school side is more prevalent with using purchase orders. I know Perry also will use purchase orders and get those to me in advance as well that describes it.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Chairman, both your microphone and my microphone are muted.
I was first asking if anybody else had any other discussion points or questions before I started going into my own. So on this one, it sounds like maybe there's just a slight bit more work and if that's ready for Monday, great, but if not, maybe have to push this one off or?
We will take a look at this and reconvene tomorrow. If it looks like there's something we can do to bring it back, we'll try. If not, we may, you may see this again in June.
Okay. So if there's no other comments or discussion on this one? Come back to my agenda. Can, at this point, move on to item number three, which is a discussion of upcoming capital items. We're up to four folks in the audience. Does anybody that's joined us want to speak up on this one? Or if not, we'll be getting to the pesticide one right after this. Seeing no hands going up. Matt, are you or John taking the lead on this discussion?
I think I'd be prepared to go forward on this, Mr. Chairman, if that'd be helpful.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Sure. Looking at the last conversation that we had roughly a week and a half or so ago, regarding the long-term capital items and trying to look at also as debt is retired and trying to kind of put that into perspective, at least for the council, as you look forward over the next few years. I thought it might be helpful to take a look at at least some of the larger ticket items that we have scheduled or at least on the, on the, I'd say in the next six-year horizon, five to six-year horizon that are known or at least anticipated at this time, some of which have numbers associated with them, but also to look at during that same window, what the council has for, or what the town has for bonded debt and as that, and how that is being retired. And if I may for a moment, I'd like to share my screen to show you kind of what I've, what I've got at this point in time. And I'll also provide this to you once I get it a little bit more refined. But hopefully this will give you a good look at what we have. Can you see that? Okay, is there a spreadsheet that you have on your screen? Perfect. So what you'll notice on the screen and-
Matt, it's pretty small.
Is it okay?
Matt, yeah, can you make it larger for some of us eyesight impaired people?
Let's see, you're speaking, you're preaching to the choir. Then maybe a little bit, I might have to bring that down a little bit. Try this one more time. How does that look? A little bit better?
That's great. Yep.
So what you find here is that at the beginning, on the top of this spreadsheet, you'll notice these are our current bonds that we have out there, starting with as a retired. So this year we have two different bonds or leases that will be retired in the coming year. One is the community center, so that, that actually goes back. We're in the, this is my 20th year plus for the town, and this is the 20th year for that bond, and it is being retired this year. So our last payment will be made at 78,750. And then we also had a copier, copier lease that the town entered into, I think roughly five years ago, that's also retiring this year. And then you'll notice I have the project and description in the middle there. And then coming over here on the savings, what I showed there is the savings by fiscal year. So next year for fiscal '23, the town won't have that $88,576 combined liability from those two bonds that are retiring this year. And then in fiscal year '23, which would be next year's budget, a year from now, you have the fire department ladder truck, which is a lease purchase that we entered into five years ago, and that will be retired next year. And then you'll notice the savings after '23 will be 318,000. The cumulative amount would be the combined savings that pay off of 406. That would be the 22 plus 23 is retirement amount. And that's, this column here will be kind of a rolling number, total accumulation as, as those are retired. And then going forward in '24, there's another lease purchase bond that will be, or lease purchase that will be retired in '24. And then in '25, it'll be the turf field, which seems like it was just last year. It was by then, it'll be, will be five years out and that will come off the books. And then some of the larger ones would be the sewer bond, which, which will be 20 years old in fiscal year '27. The town center bond in '28. And then, so what I end up looking at here, in the next six years, seven years, the town will have a combined savings at some point as those bonds are retired. If nothing else was put onto that of $854,856 cumulative over that window, window of time. Now, that's, that's saying that everything else stays the same roughly. Well, you know, obviously during that time, we'll have other capital needs, we'll try to meet those as they come on relating to, say, lease purchase approaches that we've done for larger ticket items on an operational side. But then looking below, the closest things, closer items that we do have in the anticipated future is shore road improvements would be the, probably the larger item, the largest item that we have looming in the distance at this point in time. We'll be starting the, the planning and engineering for that this summer, following up from the original work that was done a year ago. So that, that work shall continue. The estimated cost on that on the high end is roughly $5 million. That's a hopeful number, because construction costs have been growing as everything else this year has. You know, Portland's gone out to some, some projects and they've, they've grown by over 30% of what their estimated initial price was. So we had a range of 3.5 to 5 million on that project going in, depending upon the scope and scale of that. But that being said, that's why I put in the 5 million, thinking about that for either, you know, estimated for fiscal '23, so a year off now or a year beyond that, fiscal year '24. Now, the debt service on that, and this would be anticipating that we receive no state funding or grant or other funding for that, which I will, I will preface this conversation by stating that for everything that we do have identified here, we will be pursuing any alternative fundings or funding models that exist out there to help offset that. Shore Road, for instance, would be a prime candidate for either PACS, regional funding or MPI state funding to help offset. Those are not full funded by those projects, funding project, funding sources. But the town would have a match of somewhere from either ranging on the low of 25% to 50% or more that we would have to come up with. But still, that's a half a loaf is better than having to buy the whole loaf when it comes to that. But looking at the debt service estimate, that would be the debt service over a 20-year bond at two and a half percent for shore road. So you'd be looking at adding debt service of roughly $313,000 annually. The other item that, there's a couple of items that are also out there, which is the replacement of Mitchell Road Culvert, which if you look at the entrance to Hobstone, there is a huge culvert that exists under that road. That's our culvert. And it, it's stable, but it does need to be replaced probably in '24 or '25, or fiscal year '24 or '25. It's been on our radar for some while. And if you remember, councillors who were with us at the time, the culvert study that was performed, that was one of the higher priorities for replacement that we do have. The other that comes to mind in the near term would also, if you're going to do that, it may be a good opportunity to go to a bond or at least potentially combine them together in a bond with the shore road package to do that as well. But Spurwink Culvert at the, at the crossing of the Spurwink River on Spurwink Avenue, just after, just after Colonial Village, at that crossing there. Again, for those council members who are here, and I'm not sure if Council Noonan was with the wet team at the time, but you almost needed to be deployed to pull me out of that culvert, because I was standing on the side when it eroded and I almost went to Scarborough one afternoon. So that, that's on the radar for needing to be replaced at some point in time. Willow Brook is the, is the culvert above it that's being replaced in this year's budget. That is, that's a pretty substantial project. This is downstream from that and due to, you know, due to title impacts, right now it's, it's, you know, we may find that that will need greater capacity sooner rather than later. Right now it is, there are, there are signs of scouring that are in there. And you can see that from the volume of water that goes through there as well. So that would be on more of the near term. The next item that comes up within that, within that five-year window would be the cemetery, Evergreen Cemetery expansion, or possibly finding an additional parcel to expand a cemetery into. And as we talked about last week, that is an item that we, that's an unknown cost at this point in time. And '27 is probably the worst-case scenario that we would need to find that purchase. But, but I think that's something that the town will want to have a thought on within the next five to seven years. At least have an action plan in place for, for expansion or adding to. And then additionally, the sewer expansion. Now, that would be to expand our current, our current sewer system that is in the town. One of the areas that has been identified is within the Hampton Roads neighborhood off from Fowler Road as a natural expansion for that due to smaller parcel as well as parcel sizes, as well as it may be a perfectly structured neighborhood that would allow for the expansion of that. That fiscal year '28, estimated fiscal year also lines up. If you look up above, the sewer bond being retired in fiscal year '27. So that there's a, there's a reason behind or a linkage behind that. As you notice that, that won't be retired, it would be the opportunity at that point to perhaps expand that into there. That's a rough estimate at four and a half million to do that expansion. It could be, it could be greater, but looking at that, debt service on that would be 20 years at 169,000, basically almost 170,000. At that point, looking at possibly three and a half percent as a guest of it on the, on the interest rate. But then you'd also look at by that point in time, using part of roughly two and a half million dollars from the sewer fund that currently exists that the rates are going into or the funds are going into to help for that future use. And then two final items that are also out there in the further out years would be Sawyer Road, project that exists where, along with the town of Scarborough, and the town would have to decide what it would like to do for that. There are options that, that could exist out there with either discontinuing the road and, and removing what currently exists there before the, before nature takes it back over. And it does a number of times during the year, specifically with flood tides at the present time. It's known for overtopping and the majority of that overtopping takes place below the culvert that we, that sits in, it sits in Cape Elizabeth, but the Scarborough section is the one that's heavily impacted. That would take some coordination between the two communities. And then finally, the last would be expansion for the fire department within five to six years for additional residential expansion for sleeping quarters for, for a larger fire slash rescue, rescue service that would, that would be in place. That would be, so those are the items that, that quickly come to mind, or not quickly, but have been scheduled over the years and do sit out there. Now, this does not take into consideration anticipated, you know, large ticket items that the school is anticipating, but that's a, I thought it might be helpful for the council to see what we, what we do have sitting on the out years for, for the, at least the larger ticket items. You know, there, there'll always be dump trucks and loaders and, and, and rescue vehicles, sorry, ambulances that'll, that'll also need to be replaced. But those are more of the operational cost side of it than, than, than these really super large ticket items that, that sit out there. Hopefully that was helpful.
Yeah, no, Matt, that's super helpful. What strikes me on that list is that much of what's there is either sort of of the replacement maintenance variety. And whether that be roads and culverts and things like that, that are, you know, natural end-of-life replacements, or whether it be equipment that's a natural end-of-life replacement. There's not a lot on there. If we tie this back to the exercise we did last week with the budget and aligning our goals with, you know, expenditures and fiscal planning and things like that. There's not a lot on there, save for maybe the fire station that sort of relates to expansion of services or enhancement of services. So I think about the cellular conversation that we keep having or the connectability and walkability in town and sidewalks and things like that. And, you know, maybe there's a couple of, certainly I know that in the original engineering plans or look that we saw on Shore Road, there, there were absolutely, you know, walkability and bikeability and things like that. They were built into that, but people can also do that today. You know, that would be improving that capability, but not necessarily expanding or adding that capability. So as we go forward, not at all- as we go forward, not at all looking to dig into it tonight, but as we're doing this and we start to go forward with the school department in sort of overlaying some of their similar work and and exercise here. I think it'd be important for us to start sort of bucketing those things that are not only are they a known expense, but what sort of category of expenses? Is it something that? Again, it's that programmed, you know, fire truck is is going to need to be replaced that we just know the road's going to wear out or something like that. Or is it, hey, this is this is an additional service that we're adding? And I mean, it'll help us in terms of again tying back to our goals, but I think it'll also help the public and the citizens to see. You know, what are the costs and the sort of horse trading that you need to do? To say, oh, well, why can't we have all of these things? Well, here's what, you know, so if you, you know, and that's, that's where you start to get into more of the wants and needs, I think, discussion.
So what, one item that also comes to mind, it would be tied in with the like the sewer expansion would be sidewalks on on Fowler Road. You know, that's a, that'd be a natural connection that would take place while you're doing a sewer expansion is in that section would be, you know, the continuation of what we're doing with segments one and two next year. That, you know, be the natural expansion for that to service that heavily residential neighborhood as well. So yeah, those are definitely items that we'd like to, you know, look at in the future going forward.
Yeah. So, you know, I think this is a good start. I think we need, I think we have more work to do to layer in some of those things that are unplanned, unprogrammed as of now and aren't of the the sort of wearing out variety. So Jeremy, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Jamie. And and thanks, Matt. This is a great job pulling this information together and looking at it. I think one of the things that might be helpful for me in terms of of thinking about this and thinking about programming costs, I appreciate the the work you put into sort of identifying when the bonds, individual bonds are being retired in the savings. For just for the way my brain works, I think it'd be helpful to see sort of like, what's our total bond payment in a given year? And then and then relative to the savings. And I think that'd just help me have a better view of, okay, so this $78,000 bond payment comes off. And if we don't add anything more to the plate, then our anticipated bond payment that year would be, you know, X minus 78,000. And and then just as we're, we're looking at potentially plugging in different projects, I think it'd help us kind of see, see the impact in terms of that total, total annual payment. And then the other, the other thought that I had just in terms of Jamie's question on sort of what are the sort of strategic opportunities that we have on the radar screen, I think the the idea of sidewalks as a potential add on with the sewer on Fowler is a good one. I know we've also had some discussion and there's some discussion in the comprehensive planner on Mitchell as well, which is another area that, you know, I just think it's worth at having that as a as a potential item that we may need to look at bond funding in the future.
Most surely, and I'll be happy to. Because because I don't want to give Councilman Penny Jordan any any more ice cream than that I try to put on on a daily basis anyways. So I will ship you over the we do have that grand total. So you can see that as well. It's a great spreadsheet, but to screen share it would probably, it would probably short circuit us all. So
And while we were talking, just two other things that, you know, again, circling back with Fort Williams Park to see if any of the potential items that are coming out there might be of that bond level of expense. And then the other one that I didn't see on there is, and I know we've, we've taken a look at trying to crack this nut in a variety of different ways, but it strikes me that the last time we looked at sort of formal numbers around the historical society Spurwink School, that that was at a level of expenditure that might bear bonding as well.
Yeah, and I I did that. I struggled with putting that on. It was on, it was off, it was on, it was off. The one area that thought on that would be also working with the the historical society on on, you know, trying to find a capital campaign that they may also want to participate at. So, you know, the upwards number of that was a million dollars. And then the revised was roughly 815. And unfortunately, we didn't, we didn't have the good, good graces of receiving one of Congresswoman Pingree's 10 earmarks that I applied for. So but we took a shot.
Are the reactions to or discussion about Matt's list here? Matt, do you know if if Donna and team are sort of going through the same exercise like we discussed yet, or or have you shared this with her? Maybe if if they aren't, I know they've got other stuff going on, but maybe share this with her as a way to sort of like that spark.
She she's, she's been out this week, but she's back tomorrow. So I do have this to share with her because I have a couple of other items we need to circle back on as well for scheduling that that combined meeting with the school board as well to come back on the one, one town concept as well as these, as well as these items. So.
Okay. Anybody else on this item? All right. Thanks, Matt. And staff that supported and pulling that together. Appreciate that. So now we're back to get them on pesticide regulations. There's a memo in the packet from the ordinance committee. And I know we had at least one person that wanted to speak up on this. So Ms. Wasserman, Matt will pull you up at this point. You may have to raise your hand. Oh, no, there you go. So your mic is open. If you wouldn't mind again, just your name and address one more time.
Sure. Thank you. My name's Trish Wasserman. I live at Three Running Tide Road in the Broad Cove neighborhood. And thank you so much for even including this item on a really dense agenda. I can't believe that you guys have to sit through all of this, all these every month, many times in a month. So thanks for putting this up there and helping to make it a priority. I know you'll be, you've been doing a lot of work in the committee for which I'm grateful. I wanted to comment tonight that I will hope you would consider in the mix rather than aligning with what Falmouth is doing, consider aligning more so with what South Portland and Portland have been doing. And in particular, I think, consider the South Portland regulations that are are now in place. I think that probably it aligns better with what our needs are in Cape Elizabeth to help us work toward better protecting our fishing community, you know, with with the application of pesticides and herbicides directly running off people's lawns into Casco Bay to help protect our farmland community by continuing to preserve the ability of pollinators to be in our community to have a sensible ordinance that still allows commercial use of pesticides for the farming community in Cape in an appropriate way. And to really be very specific and educating everyone about why we all want to be more conscious of what we are doing. When we're applying products or allowing outside companies to apply products to our lands, to our towns' lands. I think our farming committee already is very conscious of what they're applying and we're pretty thoughtful about how they're doing it. But I'm really concerned about our general population. And I think we really have a poor understanding of what it is we're doing and how it's affecting everyone around us. And I think that the Falmouth ordinance, I I might be missing something, but it's so vague, it just requires registering that you're going to use it. It doesn't provide guidance on the kinds of things that might be appropriate or not. And I feel like we could do a better job at actually identifying products or types of chemicals that are potentially harmful, educating ourselves and others about it and being more thoughtful about how we're using any kinds of herbicides, which includes pesticides and pesticides and in plant deterrence in Cas and and how it directly is pouring into Casco Bay and all of our greater watershed here in in town, our marshes and all of those things that we sow treasure as part of who we are and our community here, you know, farm fish and otherwise. So thank you for doing this. I'll turn it over to those of you who have given this even, you know, just much greater thought. But please let me know how we can help and what we can do. And again, thank you for putting this on the agenda.
Thank you for your comments and both specifically regarding the the item, but also appreciate your remarks generally about the work. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wanted to offer comment on this item at this time? Seeing no hands go up. Penny, as ordinance chair, would you like to just introduce this and give a little bit of overview of the committee's work?
Um, I let's see, where do I want to start? On number one, the ordinance committee, we had, we received a couple of presentations regarding pesticide, pesticide ordinances and kind of what's going on across the state and what different communities are doing. One of the things and I I had Maureen sent it along to me that I think becomes very useful and was really guided a lot of the work that was done by not only Falmouth, but is used to guide and water. And it's about yard skipping. What we honed in on, I think, as an ordinance committee was on some of the things and why we leaned toward Falmouth is that Falmouth was looking at it that they didn't have a full understanding of the problem and the impacts on water sources, et cetera. And they also, just as Ms. Wasserman Wasserman said, there was an education piece that they saw was a gap that there are many people in the community that are, don't have a full understanding of the impact around the use of certain pesticides. There was, there was also not a firm understanding of what types of pesticides and fertilizers were being applied. And so that's why they started to take the direction around looking at what is it that the professional lawn maintenance companies, which I believe they ended up finding out that there were like 19 of them within the community that had registered in there. There could be more, what they were applying and where it was being applied. And they also started looking at where might the areas be where there could be some runoff into different water sources. And they didn't have a good feel for what testing of those waters and and what the impact was. So basically, they set out and I think what kind of attracted us to Falmouth is that they had engagement. They engaged different members of the community, different factions, and really came up with what is it that the problems that we need to solve? And it took them about a year and a half to really, and many drafts of their ordinance to really come up with what they have in place today. And this is basically the way the ordinance is written is it's really a has an education portion to it. And so how do we educate the community on the use of pesticides? It has a data gathering element to it, which is what is it that is being applied in the community? And how big is the problem that we're trying to solve? And as I said, yard skipping played a big role in helping them define it. We did look at South Portland, Portland ordinances, and I believe one of the speakers, she gave us examples of ordinances around other communities. And I believe we felt that this fit Cape Elizabeth at this point in time because it took the approach of getting our arms around what the issue is and what actions need to be taken rather than taking action and not really having a full understanding of the problem that we're trying to solve. And I think another key point is we constantly talk about pesticides, but fertilizers become an important part of that as well. And education to the community on fertilizer application. So that's kind of where we got in a nutshell. Do you want to add to it, Jamie?
Well, first, thanks to you and the committee for the work and also for the thorough explanation there. Appreciate that. I don't, I don't have anything specific I want to jump in on at this point, other than the, you know, open it up for other thoughts, whether it be others on the ordinance committee. If you want to add to anything that that Penny just outlined or just other counselors with thoughts in general. So. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Yeah, thanks, Jamie. And thank you, Penny. So I am currently on the ordinance committee. I wasn't when this memo was pulled together. But I just wanted to chime in and say, I'm generally supportive of this approach. I think it makes a lot of sense to pull us together some data and better understand where we're at. And then also to pair that ordinance with other policy levers we can pulling particularly education to try and help, you know, reduce the the use of of unnecessary applications of pesticides and fertilizers. I also did take the opportunity to reach out to some other colleagues with conservation organizations around the state as a member of the Made Invasive Species Network to a number of folks who are working on this and to a person, everyone I reached out to point when I asked them for model ordinances that we should be looking at pointed to the Falmouth ordinance as, you know, one of the example ordinances that that people should be looking at. So I just wanted to add that as you know, sort of an additional endorsement of this approach. It's one that's pretty widely supported within that, you know, community of of folks who are working on invasive species management as well as as that conservation.
Thank you, Valerie. Go ahead.
I I agree that education portions really important and I'm, I'm just a little surprised that Falmouth is really what we're looking at. It just seems to me that our identity is a little bit more like South Portland with with our water, our connection to Casco Bay. Just seems to me that maybe we would, our identity is a little more like South Portland, Portland. But I think what we're looking at is sort of like, where do we begin? And I think education important is really important. And if we want to take that route a year, a year and a half just seems like such a long time to me when we already know from different reports, different studies, talking to other people, other towns, looking at, I think there's two dozen towns now in Maine that have regulated pesticides and herbicides. And for us to take a year and a half to do some regulating just seems to me like a really long time. So is there a way we can begin with the town's properties? Sort of what have a discussion while we're doing the other that Penny was talking about? Do we talk about this is what we're using for pesticides and herbicides in the town? This is this is what we can do with town proper properties. These are the ingredients. This is the chemicals we're using and really look at that first. Is that something? And also, it seems like we've got friends of Casco Bay. We've got And also it seems like we've got friends of Casco Bay. We've got Gulf of Maine Research Institute. And I was told that the director lives here in Cape Elizabeth. Seems like we've got, and we've got our land trust. We've got some really great resources to talk to and collaborate with. What about Sprague? I would think that they have someone in their organization that is informed about pesticides, has methods and resources they're using that would collaborate with us. It just seems that there may be ways to move this along, along quicker than a year and a half. And just looking at South Portland's and Portland's websites, they have education, frequently asked questions. They're talking to people about lawn care practices. It would give us a chance to put something like that together too. But I think what Penny is saying is where do we begin and how do we, how do we start this process? So I'd really love to talk about that. How, how do we begin this?
Gretchen, your hand was next, but I think Penny is just going to offer an answer to one of the points or maybe a clarification to one of the points that Valerie was making. So.
Valerie, when I use the, the number a year and a half, that was to kind of impress on people the, the amount of work that Falmouth put into creating crafting their ordinance. Not that Cape Elizabeth has to take a year and a half. In addition to Falmouth has oceanfront property. They are, they also have a lot of water bodies that they have, have to consider. The, the other thing is that you're exactly right. It's where do we start? And, and the examples you gave of people who live here in the town, I think are great examples of when we talk about engagement, that's the population. Those are the people that we would want to start engaging in. How do we maybe take this Falmouth ordinance as a foundation and build, build it out for Cape Elizabeth? How do we take all of the work that's been done? When you look at South Portland and Portland's ordinances and the education, they're using the yard scaping that that most every town is using as the approach to educating people on the use of pesticides and fertilizers. The other thing is that with anything that we do, we need to scope it and understand what problem we're trying to solve. I don't, and that's a discussion that we had in the ordinance committee is that what's the problem we're trying to solve? Cause we don't know how big the problem is. When you mention, and Matt can probably talk about this better than I, that many of our town properties, Bob Malley, several years ago, took it, it upon himself after discussions that we would look at the pesticides and fertilizers that are being used on town properties. So that's, that piece has been in place for several years and I'm sure we would want to, you know, roll that in and, and take a look at just as the schools also address pesticide and fertilizer use on their properties. But to, to look at South Portland and Portland or to look at another community and say, that's the solution. That's why I am a proponent of Falmouth because the ordinance is written to help identify, to help address some of the immediate needs such as around education, to know what pesticides are being applied in the community. That is why they registered the pest, the the lawn care companies so that you know what is being applied and where it's being applied. And then you can start identifying the water bodies that you want to protect or need to be protected because they're more pesticide and other chemical applications are happening there. And then you can start taking those actions and start isolating. Where is it that we need to address the problems? So from my perspective, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Falmouth is ordinance is a strategy and it's a very, I think it's written in a way that understands that we have to take care of invasive species. You can't have a blanket application that you're not going to apply any pesticides. So if we take and we unravel that and we start to overlay it in Cape Elizabeth, I truly believe that is a first step. And then you start pulling the strings as you learn more and more data. And, and then come up with the solutions that make sense for our town because there's no such thing in my world as a one size fits all. And I think this helps us solve the problem for Cape Elizabeth. And they put, I think, a pretty good plan in place to make that happen. So.
Gretchen, go ahead. And then I know, I know, I think Matt can go a little deeper on what the town's currently doing too. But Gretchen, you go, go ahead first.
Thank you. So I guess I just want to say, I, I feel really strongly about doing something about this, but I feel woefully undereducated on it. I did want to go back and look at, it looks like the ordinance committee addressed this during three different meetings. I wanted to go back and I can't recall if those are recorded or if there's just minutes, but I wanted to go back and check those, but I got so into the catching up on the planning board meetings that I didn't get to it before this meeting. But I do feel like definitely I, I personally would need a lot more information about what you did learn and, and what Falmouth looks like versus some of the others that we might want to consider. Cause to me at a glance, this again, not knowing enough, it feels almost like it's not aggressive enough, but I understand and I absolutely agree that we need to, I think, Penny, you said, get your arms around the issue and understand what it is, you know, what's happening in our town, what, what kind of pesticides, herbicides, whatnot are being used, what's the effect? What are the alternatives? We need to know all that, but and being new to this, correct me if I'm wrong, but it feels a little odd to me to pass an ordinance to just mostly for the purposes of collecting data. And it almost seems to me from this like that's what Falmouth did. And I'm a little concerned looking at this, that they passed all of this and then most of it says, but it's on hold. So it says they wanted to collect data and they have everyone sending the data to the town, but then it says assistance is still, still needed to interpret it. Then it says they wanted to do testing, but that's on hold because of the cost and they wanted to do education, but it's on hold. So I guess I'm feeling a little hesitant to just jump right in and base ours sort of off of what they've done when there seems like they're not even really implementing their own ordinance at this point. And I just wonder, we might want to learn more about why and what's holding them back and try to avoid having the same pitfalls.
Dollars held them back for the water testing. So there'd need to be a dollar commitment. COVID held them back for the implementation of education. That's a no brainer. And the fact that they are having to, and I truly believe this, I think you need to understand who's doing applications in the community and what they're applying. And you can't get that data at the state level because it's not carried by, by town. It's, and so basically Falmouth set up a mechanism that will collect that data. And then you need to say, okay, how are you going to, who's going to interpret it? It's all of those things with any ordinance. If you, if you go and you say you're going to ban pesticides for residential use in Cape Elizabeth, you still need people to implement it. So so my position is if you look at it, you can look and you can see how one might take and implement specific aspects of that ordinance and what are the resources you would need to do it? And, and I, I will just go on record of say, and I'll say it again. I'm not a proponent of blanket banning of things that are currently people's choices. As long as they're doing it responsibly. And I do believe that anybody applying pesticide should be licensed, but we can't license everybody who's getting, still putting roundup on their lawn after reading every article about it. But a key part of Falmouth's ordinance is education. It's a major part of it. And, and that's why I, I really think even if they haven't had the opportunity to totally implement it, they have crafted something that we can look at and say, how can we apply this in Cape Elizabeth?
Okay, yeah, that's.
Go ahead, Valerie.
I, I just wanted to respond to a couple of things. I hear what, what Penny's saying. My concern is we have information from friends of Casco Bay from the research institute Gulf of Maine. We know what chemicals are that we need to regulate so that larval shrimp isn't wiped out, right? We, we know that stuff. We've got fishers who depend on, on being able to fish out here. We have pollinators. Our farmers need the pollinators. We, we used to have fireflies. How many people see fireflies anymore? There's, there's so much going on that I'm just afraid that if we, we wait on some of these things where we know what chemicals wipe out the larva shrimp. We know some of these things. Some of it, I think we could start to regulate. Get more information, have some hearings, have community meetings. But I think that's going to be important for us to begin regulating it because it's impacting our, our, not only our industry, but our pollinators, our farmers and not to mention our pets and our children, right? So I just think that some of this information we, we, we know and we, we just need to start regulating and it doesn't have to be. It can, it can be thought out and it could be something that we talk to people and educate. But I really think we need to begin the process.
Penny, is your hand still raised or? Matt, Jeremy, before I go to you, Matt, do you want to chime in briefly on, on some of the things that are actually happening on town property?
Sure, yeah. The town currently has an organic program that we pursue on all the town properties as the first option and have for, for a number of years. When you do find the exception that they do need to go to more of a conventional approach, then, then they do that, but it's ultimately at a last resort. The, the closest example that I could get to that would be two years ago, we had a pretty significant tick outbreak over at Lyons Field and we had a number of small children who were, who were getting some significant tick bites or basically we're coming out of the you know, the first cut of rough with a lot of ticks on them and some, and concerns about deer ticks. So we did address that. But we do advertise it pretty heavily. We do have a certified pesticide applicator on staff and Scott Smart, our Parks Foreman, who's fantastic. And conversation with Scott will also indicate to you that even if you are applying organics, you need to be certified pesticide applicator. So it's the same qualifications that they need to know. So he, he's a wealth of information that may be a resource, a resource the town would want to look at, at least from policy side of it, to have that conversation as a certified applicator. So he, he knows his business about as good as anybody that you can find. So he's, he's a great resource, but but we do ultimately, long story short, is our, our first approach is on the organic side of it. And then, but if they do find something that it's quite frankly, just cannot be overcome. The last resort is that we would go to something a little bit stronger and a very controlled atmosphere or, or controlled application. And then the, the other part is Council Deveraux also brought up, one of the last speakers you had before we went into quarantine was, was Mary Cirillo from, from friends of Casco Bay. So, you know, and she had a good presentation regarding that. So I think that's, you know, the town's tried to also pursue an education side of that as well as a component for, for the larger side of it. And then the third thing to consider is enforcement is, is, is a challenge, just with staffing levels. Now, some of the towns that do enforce it on a heavier layer, who do have more strident restrictions, have larger staffs that they had dedicated for that management side of it. So that's just something to think about long-term downstream effects. Pardon the pun, but the downstream effects of, of trying to manage and, and and enforce ordinances would be, would be something that we'd also want to consider. That's not a cop out or an excuse. It's just something to consider. So it's just part of, part and parcel of the discussion. So thanks, thanks for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for that additional information, Matt. Jeremy, go ahead and then Caitlin.
Clicked the wrong button. Thanks, Jamie. Yeah. I, and I think the other, you know, I guess to Valerie's point, the other sort of unintended consequence that I think about and, and worry about some with going more in a aggressive ban type of approach is that a lot of the folks who are using these products now are going through lawn care and other landscaping companies that are, that are using licensed applicators. And I know one of the challenges that, that the pesticide control board sort of deals with at the state level is these are commercially available products. And if you take the option off the table for licensed applicators to use them, it doesn't necessarily mean you're eliminating the use. It just means that, I mean, you might be eliminating some of the use, but you're, you're going to push that use into hands of folks who are able to purchase the, the products for residential use and may not know what they're using or what the soils that they're using them on can absorb effectively. And so you, you may wind up creating additional problems that, that aren't apparent on the landscape now. So I, I guess that's one of the reasons that I'm, I'm particularly interested in this Falmouth based approach where we can learn more about what the types of products that are being applied now are. A significant portion of folks in town, I just looking around my neighborhood at the signs I see on the lawns, you know, are, are using lawn care companies who are licensed applicators and, and having some of that data, I think will help us tailor better and more responsive ordinances that'll, that'll deal with the problems.
Caitlin?
Well, I was going to say a lot of what Matt said, timing in about what the town does, because we went over this a couple of years ago, but he covered that very well. Other than that, I was going to comment to Valerie's comments that I, I think we need to collect more data before we can go all gung so. As Jeremy was saying, you know, this is the, the smartest approach so that we don't end up going somewhere we don't want to go. That was all.
Thank you. Are there other comments from anybody? One of the things, you know, is pointed out in the discussion of, in response to some of Gretchen's questions. No matter what we do, I think one of the things we need to make sure is that we're not creating an unfunded mandate. So it sounded like part of the problem with implementation and on the Falmouth side was obviously circumstantial related to last year in COVID, but also maybe not, you know, fully prioritized allocation of funds to support carrying out some of the things that are outlined in their ordinance. So I think we, I, I don't recall seeing anything that was in the current version of the budget that we've been looking at that specifically addresses this. And, you know, I'm sure that there are other ways to run designated fund and things like that, that we could start to chip away at it. But I, I think, I think some, some further and thorough discussion around, you know, if there are things that are going to be required and if they're set out with the purpose of obtaining a certain amount of information and all that kind of stuff, that we make sure that we've got both the funding mechanisms in place as well as, you know, a specifically architected tracking measurement plan to actually. You know, a specifically architected tracking measurement plan to actually do what we're saying. Should be done, so. You know. Or frankly, if if. We were to go further than what's being proposed by the ordinance committee, there's a different set of expectations around. You know, both community outreach as well as outreach to vendors and. You know, permitting. Kinds of things and and such like that. So in any case, whatever avenue we wind up going down, I think. And which is not to suggest the ordinance committee hasn't already considered this, but I think collectively, we all need to have a little. Bit more thorough conversation around. How do we actually put something into practice and what's required for that? And if there's funding associated with that, where's that coming from? So. Nicole, go ahead.
I was going to ask, what's our action item from tonight, but also. What more do we expect to learn? From now to a year from now, like what? We know. What's happening? We know why the towns around us are banning pesticides and. I agree outright ban might just push the product into the wrong hands and misuse. So I definitely see both avenues of that, but I also don't have an answer to what more will we learn? Twelve months from now, if we just implemented an education and testing and permitting approach, because there's a lot already known.
I mean, the sense that I have and feel free ordinance committee members that have been. A little deeper on this than than the rest of us. Is that there's a lot of good and. You know, generalized information that's known. About the area and and the region, but we don't have a lot of very specific information that's known about. Our town and our community. And so. There are probably a lot of assumptions that can be drawn. Or are reasonable to make. But without doing the work to validate those things. I think we're still. I I don't want to say it as crudely as, you know, throwing darts to the board or something like that, because it's 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 obviously more than that, but. I think I think what I'm hearing is to figure out the the very precise and specific solution. To whatever the problem is here in Cape, more specific Cape information needs to be known versus. Broader information about a bunch of the towns sort of surrounding Casco Bay or. You know, other individual communities. Anybody else?
There isn't a bubble around Cape Elizabeth that stops or run off from South Portland or Scarborough. The other thing is the Falmouth ordinance looks very centered around commercial. And I would like to know, like, if we are getting this for data, I want homeowners to have to get a permit, just like they have to do to burn a fire, right? Like, so we can at least get data on what homeowners themselves are using. So I wanted to at least go beyond the commercially licensed. People.
So your previous question to start off that was around action item, but I I I think we'll be definitely having. More. Conversations about this before moving anything forward. So this is. What I would expect to be the first of several conversations on this item, not something that's being pushed or rushed through. In any way at all. So, you know, to for yours and everybody else's sort of peace of mind on that, I I I don't expect that. You know, this is something that is one or two. Agendas out, it, you know, might be might be a couple of couple of workshops that we have to have to to work through some of these points and and so on. So. Penny, sorry, did I cut you off?
Um, I. I I was thinking about action items and but you kind of headed down the road of additional. Additional workshop. And so therefore I'll take the tack that. So what information are we going to bring forward to future workshops? Or are we going to ask the ordinance committee to take some additional action? Or is there an action that we want to? Take that, I don't know, maybe the conservation commission fits in here somewhere.
So much, Penny, I don't think it's so much a matter of new or additional information to be introduced or work on the part of the ordinance committee to come back with. You know, other alternatives or things like that. I think I think it's probably more just frank, just got, you know, frank discussion amongst us about. Which way some of us are early, you know, for for many of us, you know, you know, getting this recommendation back after having been through some of the earlier discussions. Is the first time, you know, really reengaging on this particular topic. And so as Gretchen said, you know, you know, she has interest in going back and and looking through some of the details around. The discussions that were had, I think that's.
Smart thing for all of us to do. And so I I don't think there's necessarily sort of new exploration or or new. New information or new work to be done so much as it's just giving us a little bit more time to sit with what we have. And then frankly, just, you know, have have the discussion where we say, well, you know, who's who's more interested in. You know, what I'm hearing from Valerie and Nicole of of being a little bit more aggressive and and pushing things a little harder and and who's more in favor of a. You know, a slower and more deliberate approach and and. You know, just just go from there. So I'm certainly not ready to bring this forward to, say, Monday's agenda. And I think I just think that there's a little bit more discussion for us to have on it. I'm I'm not talking about. Parking it for six months and coming back to it. Then I'm I'm talking about continuing to work this at our our next couple of workshops or so.
So is there something because um that says to me that some of the. The I mean, the presentation that we had on yardscapes, I think, was really beneficial to understand because many. Communities have implemented based on that. And I think there was the along with that presentation that we had a. That the person who did that, she was a wealth of information. So maybe there's a presentation that needs to happen around that so that. People are aware of what that's all about. But anyway, that's just my thought.
Jeremy, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond briefly to Nicole's question about what more we would learn to. I I there is a lot known about. These chemicals and how they interact with the environment. I think what we're what we would be hoping to gain from this sort of an approach to an ordinance is more information about what's being used and where. And I know sort of from regional level discussions with folks at Casco Bay, as Jerry Partnership and Friends of Casco Bay. There's a lot of regional level questions about, you know, sort of what chemicals are being applied, how they're currently being being broken down in the environment and what impacts are being seen across Casco Bay. And certainly when you when you drill down to that local level, we just don't have that information. So, you know, looking at. Different types of chemicals and, you know, what the level of application is across the landscape and how much of that's being broken down in soils or making its way into Casco Bay. I think those are the kinds of questions that this ordinance, this type of an ordinance would let us have better answers to than we currently do. And hopefully also, I know nitrogen loading is is becoming a more significant topic around Casco Bay. And I I appreciate Penny's desire to keep fertilizer in as part of the mix. But that's something that there's a, you know. Still a fair amount of of. Questions around in terms of what, you know, how those regional sources are playing out and and in terms of where, you know, where the nitrogen sources are coming in and how those are interacting with systems in the bay. So. I I do think there's significant more information that we could use to help us craft a better policy response. I guess that's that's my my perspective.
All right, given the time. And and the fact that we've just discussed, you know, having further additional conversations on this unless anybody has anything that. It's just absolutely critical to add to the discussion at this point. I'd say let's bring this back around for. You know, our next group workshop. And. You know, I mean, if if people do have other. Pieces of information or data that they want to introduce to the discussion, by all means, please do that. But I I'm not. I'm personally not looking for to task anybody with more things. You know, to do on this particular topic. Like I said, I think we just need to have a little bit more discussion amongst ourselves on it, so. And again, thank you, you know, to the ordinance committee for the work that you've put put in on this. Much appreciated. So with that. Try and get us across the finish line here with our last item, which Maureen has been patiently. Waiting through all this with us. And do we have anybody from the conservation committee with us too? Or Maureen, is it just you?
It's just me.
Well, it's not just you.
Oh, it's just me.
So this is something that we. Kicked over to the conservation committee to work on, if you remember. Several months ago. Or. Yeah, a couple of months ago now. With the unnamed bodies of water in town that were desperately seeking names. So Maureen, would you like to give us a brief introduction on what what's been brought forward here?
Certainly. So I promised Matt I would not take more than three minutes. So I'm gonna put my. Timer on and make sure that I don't do that. And. So this is a recommendation from the comprehensive plan adopted by the Town Council in 2019. Number seventy-two, assign names to significant unnamed bodies of water and streams. The reality is, if you look at a map of Cape Elizabeth, there's a lot of bodies of water, especially small ponds. And a lot of streams that don't have names that show up on the USGS maps, and so they're not really official names. And if you don't name them, they seem to start getting official names without the town of Cape Elizabeth really being involved. So the conservation committee went through a significant process. We had our GIS consultant. Look at these GIS maps, other data, and any pond that was greater than three quarters of an acre. Or any stream that was longer than 500 feet was assigned a unique number. And then we set up a survey on the town's website last summer. We mailed an invitation to everyone who abutted any one of these and invited them to work their way through this this poll. And suggest names. And so we get about 70 people who participated. Some of the names weren't really worth considering. But we took all the names that were suggested and the conservation committee worked their way through it. And they've given you a recommendation for most of these places. We did get some input from the members of the Cape Elizabeth Historical Society from the Cape Elizabeth Land Trust. And we are trying to follow the Bureau of Names protocols. So that if you approve a set of names, we can submit them to the feds and maybe they will end up on the USGS maps and they will really become official at that point. So I I'm going to stop at that point and and see if you have any questions.
Thank you. And thank you to the conservation committee and others involved. As you noted. Are there any counselors that want to kick off the discussion on this? Was there was there anyone else actually I assume that, but was there anyone else that wanted to speak on this from the public? I apologize for skipping out. Don't see anybody. So go ahead, Nicole.
Yeah, I know that this has been a very long process and I don't intend to make it longer. However. Has this been run through our, I don't even know if it's in existence yet, this this diversity, equity, inclusion. Subcommittee to make sure that there's representation on here. I think that that would be a good exercise for that new subcommittee.
This was not, there was no connection, there was no formal reaching out to anybody except the historic committee and. Selt, we got some input from the Spring Corporation.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
I had a similar question and and generally, thank you for the good, great work that went into this, Maureen. The only two items that jumped out at me is ones that I had. Particular issues with. I'm not a huge fan of taking names like like back and run for water bodies that are sort of regionally specific to other parts of the world and applying them here, but. I can live with it. The ones that that. I had particular questions about one. One is S twenty-nine. And I I do think I would like to have some input from the diversity, equity and inclusion committee on. Whether or not there's. They see a problem with applying Rebels Run as a place name. I, as someone who grew up in the mid-Atlantic, kind of do. And and then the other one that I I and this is just a personal preference, but I'll go ahead and express it. S twenty-six. Is not big enough to be a river. I'm sorry. It does not drain more than forty square miles. I would rather call it a stream or a brook.
Jeremy, what was the first one you mentioned? I I just didn't catch the.
S twenty-nine is is proposed as being Rebels Run.
Was it Windbore Beck? Is that what you were saying?
Oh, yeah. So there's there's three features, S eleven, S twenty-three and S twenty-seven that all have the name Beck instead of stream. And then there's four features that have or five features, four features that have the the word run. Which, you know, is a. Yeah, standard name for a stream in the mid-Atlantic, but I've never really seen it seen it applied for. You sort of a colloquial name for a stream in in the Northeast.
I was I'd never I've never even heard the word Beck before. Run I have, but not not Beck. So I I didn't even know what that was. I didn't know if that was a. Person or something, so.
I I believe they use it in Scotland mostly.
Okay. Other. Other comments, discussion? Maureen, there, just a second, Matt, there's there's. We're not trying to trying to. Move or finalize this, you know, on on any kind of specific timeline or. Or predetermined deadline of any kind, right? I mean, this is stuff that's been sitting for a while. It's part of our comp plan to get this done. But there's there's no external driver of completion on this, right?
Absolutely not.
Okay, Gretchen, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'll just say I had the same thought as Jeremy did about S twenty-nine. So I I. Also would advocate maybe for at least taking a look at that one. And in terms of, I think, what Maureen might be looking for too. With guidance for whether we want to try to make these official or whatnot. I think it's a great point that they probably. Come up, they probably wind up with sort of names that are known locally. And I think. Speaking as a first responder, I'll just say I think it's nice to have an official name for these places. It'd be great if someone. We got a call and it said that someone went through Crescent Pond instead of, you know, someone calls it Bobby's Pond and someone calls it the pond off thus and so road. I think it's really nice to have them all official and I think making them, you know, on the. On the federal maps probably would be helpful too. So that's what I would agree to taking that step.
I'm just gonna say yesterday was May fourth, and I don't know why you all are hating on Rebels Run. So. The Rebel Alliance runs strong in Cape Elizabeth.
It's the rise of the fifth today, Jamie.
Revenge of Revenge of the Fifth. Matt, what were you gonna? What were you gonna say?
I was just gonna say. Would the council like to refer this informally over to the civil rights? Sorry, the Cape Diversity and Inclusion Committee to to have a review as well. And because we can get this to Rachel and have it on the next agenda for them to provide input on as well and. Be we'd be happy to do that and come back as well. Yeah, as Maureen said, there is no, there is no deadline or timeline on this. It's just. It's at the comp plan and as a goal to get completed as well, so.
Yeah, I think that that makes sense. I'm seeing heads nod. So I I would I would say that would be the good next step, so. Go ahead, Valerie.
I I was just gonna make that same suggestion and I looking at it also, I just want to point out that S thirty-one is called Blissful Alley. And when Gretchen was saying, you know, when you when you're when you're calling dispatch. Alley, are they going to know that that's a stream or? Whatever this is, that that. Even the run, sometimes streets.
That that even the run, sometimes streets, street names end with run. So it seems like a little, it might be a little confusing to call it a run or an alley. So just some of my thoughts there. But I think it's
A run is a fish run, right? I mean, is that what that's referenced to? That's what I thought that was.
Respectfully, I think you're reading a lot more thought and meaning into some of these names than might have actually occurred. And I would suggest, one, that the conservation committee is done, done, done with this item. And two, perhaps we could send this to the diversity committee with a little list of the things that you would like them to definitely change. And I'd be happy to compile that list.
I'm not sure if it's a matter of asking them to change them so much as it's asking them to apply their point of view and perspective to make sure that things aren't missed for sensitivity reasons and things like that.
But they may not care about Beck, and you may still care about it.
Well, then I think that's a decision then for us to make. But I I don't, I I I hear your point about the conservation committee. I don't think anybody's looking to kick it back to them. I, as far as run goes, I always thought that that was a fishing reference, like salmon run and stuff like that. And so maybe I maybe I either had that incorrect or just that's not as common nomenclature as I thought it was. I had never heard the word Beck except for the the band. Anyway, that's enough of my pop culture references. We'll send it over to the diversity committee just for their, like I said, perspective and and sort of to apply their filter to it. And then see what comes back. And we'll leave it to the council to make a ultimate and final determination on these. But unless anybody has anything else to add, I think we can wrap that item. So and thank you, Maureen, for, I feel like we always stick you with items that require you to be patient for the first two hours of a meeting at least, and then hang in there for the last. But thank you for doing that regardless. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I am a night owl, so.
Is there anything else that anybody has before we look to adjourn? And are any of the remaining three folks in the audience or two folks besides Maureen interested to offer any comment? Go ahead, Ms. Wasserman. Matt, I'll open your mic in just a second. Hold on.
Just strongly encourage anybody, I strongly encourage everybody on the committee, just it's eye opening to put yourself on the list up in Augusta to be notified when things are being applied to contiguous properties. It is eye popping and my phone does not stop ringing. You have to do it in November, December. You can't just start now, but that's just for commercial. It's not for what people are applying themselves on their lawns. It is truly eye opening to see how much is going on right now. You know, chemical by chemical, stuff that shouldn't be applied that with my own eyes, I'm seeing applied to wetland properties. It's just mind boggling. So thanks. I encourage you to try it. It's really an amazing experience, unfortunately. But thank you again for all you're doing. I I really cannot extend my appreciation, any, you know, enough for all the time and energy and effort and goodwill that you apply to all of these items that are all important. So thank you.
Appreciate that. And thanks for participating in the meeting. So seeing nothing else, we will, we will adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks. Have a good night.